Item number two, do we have any public comment tonight?
No.
You can sit agenda, anything you want to go over on that first?
Yeah, I'll jump in there unless there's questions on the meeting minutes, but we'll just jump in there for general fund conferences. We have several things, bigger expenditures as we get the year started, so just a couple that I wanted to make sure and point out. We spent about 21,000 with Apple getting new laptops and technology as part of our OETT grant that we were awarded, and that training for our staff will start tomorrow morning. So our junior high, high school teachers will get started with that. We also have installed, as I said today, vape detectors in all of our junior high, high school bathrooms and locker rooms, and we're using our security funding that we have for that, and they are expensive. We spent just right at 22,000 on that project, but they obviously are what they say they are. They're detecting base, which we believe is a problem, especially in those areas like restroom and even our locker room areas. But they also, and Mr. Pruitt might be able to jump in here and explain a little bit better, but I think they have some kind of like noise, noise detection, which, you know, loud noises, gunshots and things like that. But I also think that commotion, fights and different things, because restrooms aren't always supervised. So there's a lot of advantages to having those. Mr. Pruitt, Mrs. Patterson, myself, I believe maybe even probably Ms. Tucker, who all set up on the alerts, but it will send text message alerts and an email as soon as one is true. Does it have an audio?
Only for tampering. So if they tamper, red light starts strobing and it tells them security has been notified against the tampering. We can set others up. He advised against that on those others that are tampering.
And that's some, we've talked about trying to do over here for quite a while. I think we discussed it for a couple of years with the security funding that we have, and we've carried some of that forward. We think that that's going to be a good investment and hopefully a good deterrent for those things. Like I said, you'll see this month, and I believe for the next couple of months, 43,503, that's for our insurance premium. We, I wish that was just one payment, but that's one, three. We are going to be appraised again, didn't say that right, here in the next week, actually I think it's coming this week, they're going to come and kind of do a site appraisal. They have to do that every five years, because it's been five years since we had our last one. We haven't had a lot change, other than replacement costs and donut with inflation and things like that, so we'll have to see what happens throughout premiums there. So those are some larger expenses as we get the year started. Other than that, and of course the parking lot project, we'll be issuing that check to the county shortly, and that was right, what we discussed at 30,000 for that project We did complete the, in the building fund, we completed the softball field maintenance, and we installed some carpet over the elementary, so we did have about 5,000 and some dirt work at the softball field, and the carpet installation was about 5,800, so we did have two bigger expenses out of that building fund. But other than that, that was it. Our bond fund, this is the time of year that we transfer funds around and make payments on that, so we'll see if there's a $100,000 payment listed there in the bond fund, and that goes out. And then Amanda has got our numbers here for the treasurer's report on that page and shows our fund balances, which haven't really changed much, but obviously with these bigger amounts that we're getting ready to pay now, those will go down a little bit as we get ready to start the year, payroll will kick in also. I'm going too fast, just say something, but activity fund report, Kendra, is there anything there?
Nope.
Okay, start another year. We do have several activity fund fundraiser requests, and those are listed there. Football fan pledge, we've done that for the last couple of years, that's been great for our program. Cheerleading, to do many cheer camp. Basketball banner sales, discount cards, sophomore class, we'll sell t-shirts, and the academic team would like to sell candy. So I'm sure we'll have more fundraisers next month, but these will at least get these programs started in this first month of school.
Bryce?
Yes.
The Lucky Fixer Company, the build house ice machine thing. Filters, is that just a yearly?
I wish, it's sporadic. It just depends.
Okay. No, I was just asking.
Yeah, those filters on those ice machines, you just never know. So yeah, that happens every once in a while, we have to have a little made in seller.
Is it a yearly thing or six month deal?
I'd say it's probably at least a six month deal, but yeah.
All right.
I'll make a motion, we approve the consent agenda.
Michael?
Yes.
How?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
All right, move on to item four, the principal's report. Sure.
All of our teachers are back today, so it was a really great day to see everybody. Our building looks amazing, the summer crew did an amazing job. This year our theme is eighties, so we're going to take the old school, which what a great year, because they can't have phones or electronic devices. So we're really taking it back to old school all the way across. I think that's our only update really in our handbook, is the new electronic policy that was updated in the handbook, but we're very excited to see all of our kiddos and excited for a good year, so.
Yeah, everybody came today. We had a great meeting this morning. As a high school, junior high staff, our theme this year is positivity over here. I think the third thing in the world today, that's something that we need to always remember , so on top of our social contract today, we put positive. So our goal is to find positive in everything. Other than that, really the handbook changes. One thing I did, I replaced any place that said cellphone, I took cellphone out and put a personal electronic device, and then I removed the old personal wireless telecommunication device with personal electronic device and implanted, or put the policy that you guys adopted last month in there to replace that. The other, the other change in here was for our vouch out policy. It was a little bit more outlined. If you guys looked over, I'm getting there, I was there and went to sleep, so. Oh, before I get to that, I did update graduation requirements for high schooling here. State Department used to have links to just core college prep, they had links to work ready, and then this year's eighth grade class has a completely different set of graduation standards. The State Department just has a basically a picture of all those in there. So I replaced, I wiped out the links and replaced that. I'm probably going to, I don't think we need two sections, I think we can add college prep, work ready, and core all in one paragraph and kind of clean that handbook up and just replace it with what the state department has. I know we've talked to the past, the court, they can ding us for it, but we already have kids that were on that path. As much as I don't like it, I don't think it's fair to them to change that, because the state department or the fed's changed their mind last, so I left it in our handbook as an option for them. So, and then the other one was our vouch out policy. If you looked at our old maledictorian, salutatorian policy book, it was pretty vague. I wanted to update it. It's not going to change for this year's senior class. I don't know if it would affect any of them, but I think we can, I want to put this in here, and I would like to adopt it, so that way all of our juniors down know that this is the vouch out policy going forward. Basically just outlines things a little bit more. You may not have a grade below an A in any non-weighted class, or below B in any weighted class. So the other one didn't say that, it just had to do with four points or higher. So I think we need to do that. If you looked at this, there is one section that is highlighted in red, because I don't know, and I kind of talked to our teachers today about this, says student must be a good character, and therefore may not have any disciplinary records of suspension, or may must not have earned any NCs. There's two sides to the suspension thing, especially with the cellphone policy now, there's lots of other things to look at it. I left it there so we can discuss it. I don't know how I feel about that one, because I see both sides. I do think we need to have that you can't have an NC on your transcript for no credit, so you drop in class or cut out of college class at some point. I think, I think that's what, if they take a class here and they get an NC, it's for a reason, it won't help their GPA. So, but if they come from somewhere else, I don't know why they have that NC, you know, I think that that needs to be on there. So as far as the suspension, we want our vouch to be the face of our graduated class, you know, I think they should be in good standing, but everybody can make a mistake. And so that I put in red for you guys to look at, either agree or disagree or discuss. The other ones, because it didn't have anything about our eighth grade courses, because our eighth graders can take an advanced math or a computer class for high school credit, that will count into their GPA. Must have taken one AP or college concurrent. I put one, because with our agreement with Northwestern, I think they just have to pay fees, which there, we have ways, if they are, you know, unable to pay those, that we can help them out in one class, through several foundations and things, I think we can get that taken care of. I didn't want to put the highest GPA, because there's some kids that can't take as many college courses as other kids, but I think it's very important, if you want to be the maledictorian or salutatorian of the class, that you try to push yourself above and beyond and take some upper level courses. Coursework must be considered, must be transcribed before the second semester of the student's senior year, so before Christmas, because we have to know at Christmas, basically, who's going to be the vouch out, get that process started, so we know who's giving speeches and how many awards to order and all that stuff. Unless the exception has been granted by the principal, I think that's always important if we have, you know, a broke scholar moving in at Christmas, because they had to, didn't have a choice, and they've got this gray transcript, you know, then we may need to look at that, and they may need to be able to be a maledictorian. But I think you always, you always have that gray area there and that. And then the concurrent courses and approved AP classes and trig recap will be graded on a weighted scale. So we still have our weighted scale of five points for A, four points for B for those classes, so it gives them some incentive to take some of those advanced classes and challenge themselves a little bit, but not miss out or hurt their GPA and drop the low four point. And then this one outlines the salutatorian, will be the student with the highest GPA that didn't meet all the criterias, but still can't make below B in any class, which I think is important, so they can make some Bs and maybe some lower level classes and work towards getting a high GPA, maybe not to be a vouch, but to get the salutatorian position. And then we didn't have anything in there about junior high vows and vows, so I wanted to put something in there, so the sixth through eighth grade, through that first semester of your eighth grade year, whoever has the highest GPA can be the maledictorian of the eighth grade class, or maledictorians of the eighth grade class. So I looked over, I looked at several different policies at several different schools, kind of combined some stuff that I liked from all of them. Like I said, the one part I don't know about is the disciplinary action, because if somebody makes a mistake, the freshman year should haunt them through their whole high school career, or there's lots of ways to think about that, so. But I left it in next week, so you guys can discuss it, or we can take it out. Other than that, I'm looking forward to class on Thursday. Just a reminder, Thursday, actually this year, if you drop your student off to eat breakfast at 7:45, go to cafeteria. If they don't want to eat breakfast and you want to drop them off later than that, the rest of the doors will open at 8:05, and they come right in, go to their lockers. That kind of also, if they're here early, they can be on their phones in the cafeteria before, at breakfast, because the bell hasn't rang, it's bell to bell. And that will give them a great talk opportunity to get in there, see their friends, get on the phones, do what they need to do, and then when they start down the hallway, that's a reminder to shut it off, don't turn, don't non-silent, they need to be shut off, and in their lockers, left in their cars, something, so they're not seen or heard. And the best way to do that is just leave them, leave them in your locker, don't carry them around, because if you carry them around, you're going to want to get them out and go to the bathroom and use them or whatnot. So anyways, but yeah, we're looking forward to that. Softball, first softball game is next Monday, football practice starts next Monday, so we're getting started and looking forward to a great year.
How's enrollment compared to?
High school enrollment, I believe is up, I can't tell you a final number, because not everybody is, I think everybody knew was going to enroll and roll, we've had a lot of new ones enroll in high school. I think we're going to be over 120. Junior high, I think we're going to be about 95, which is a couple up.
We are down a little bit this year, we had about 167 last year, I think we're about 146 right now. We sent over a big class, and we have a small pre-grad.
And we graduated to small classes, got a big class of eighth graders moving to freshmen, and a big class of fifth graders moving to sixth grade, so our numbers over here are, I think that fluctuates every year.
What's, since Lane did a good job of explaining the rule changes, let's go ahead and jump to number eight for the discussion on that, will freshen everybody's mind. If there is discussion on, I mean, I guess there has to be discussion on the one, the item of the suspensions, basically, will exclude a student from being a maledictorian.
Well, I would still like to sense him now. Lane and I talked about this as he was working on developing that policy, kind of went back and forth on that, but I tend to agree with him. I think that, you know, I can't think of a single kid that's been a maledictorian that that's probably happened to recently. However, I think it needs to be that administration to use some common sense in situations, so I don't know, but that needs to be something in there.
Yeah.
I can think of a lot of scenarios.
Could we put it in there, could we put it in there to the discretion of you and Lane?
I don't think it needs to be in there if you're going to go that route. I think you're better off leaving it out, and if there is a situation that we felt like we needed to come back to, with the handbook policy and student code of conduct policy that's in there, I think we can make that decision at that time.
Great. I'm going to agree, so that, I think we should strike that statement.
What about the concurrent requirement? I know that can kind of go, and like Lane said, I think financially, we can, we can definitely find ways to help any of that might be at a little disadvantage to be able to do that. I like, I like the part about challenging and pushing them to do that right now, and with concurrent classes, we don't have AP classes here, so I don't know, that's just kind of my opinion.
I'm probably fine with it, if, I think if there's a process for them to get their fees paid, I would like that to be outlined, because I think you would see some families that didn't have the ability to just say, well, we can't afford the fees, you know, it's not that big a deal, but if we had something in there that states, you know, the process for going to those foundations, I'm probably okay with the rule being in there. I'd just hate to see a student not do that because they didn't, they didn't afford, I mean, fees are not extraordinary, but they're two to $300 a class.
I need to ask Mr. Jordan what ours, what Northwestern?
Sixty-three dollars.
So ours was three, that's probably for the full semesters, if they're taking two or something.
Totally twelve, because they can take up to 12 hours tuition free.
Be four classes, correct?
Four classes, yeah. We did have a student last year that took a lot more than that, and we were able to take care of some discrepancy there that they couldn't afford, so.
My only other thing on that is, is it going to come back to bias as far as like being equal for paying for certain kids that show that they can't afford to do it and not paying for other students where families can't?
Well, I think that that's where, however, you know, whatever funding sources we're going to go through, it's probably some sort of a scholarship application process, but I mean, as of right now, we don't have any funding for that security, but I think that's probably how that would go. We used to, we, the school used to pay for those fees, and it was a reimbursement basis, so once the kid finished the classes, they had to bring their grade cards in and show that they completed it, and then we reimbursed them for those costs, so I mean, that's a possibility too, but.
I don't know that we want to get, I agree with you on that, Heather, I don't think we want to get an administration of a needs based fee, I think we just simply have something in writing that says if a fee's an issue, refer them to a foundation that possibly can take care of, and then let them do the selection on the side, guarantee pay, just I wrote that to it, I guess.
Can I say, can I say, and that's why we're going to put one, because we talked about, you know, if you did the highest GPA, then we've got kids that could take jobs in college classes, because money's not an option, but if you just take one class, and a lot of our advanced math kids, when they're junior, if their ACT score is high enough, because that's the other thing, your ACT score has to be high enough to be able to be accepted, to take it for a current class. So it's going to push them to get higher test scores on their ACT, and then one class, usually it's going to be their college graduate class, which we can offer here, so $60, and it's, so they don't have to take multiple classes, but I think one class is reasonable to come up with $60, and then like I said, if you know, if there's not, if they don't, then we can say there's these several foundations or people that you can reach out to that will do that, but, so making, making them take one upper level class is also going to push them to be better on their ACT at a later age, which is going to help, I mean, that's going to help the school look better on their poor card down road as well.
Would you want us to look at if the school paid for one class during their junior and senior year? Guarantee everybody at least one, one class? Just throwing that out.
We're going to have AP for a lot of students who are not, I think that's fine.
Good thought.
I think maybe if we did it where we first put it in and see what kind of pushback or what kind of concerns there are from families, and then if we need to address it, that if we're going to put that in the policy, that the school maybe look at offering one class, if that is something for the reimbursement. I think if we can do it for the scholarship roadmap, if they're unable or choose to go that route to their families, I mean, plus if the scholarship option, that's kind of a student more.
And probably, the four years that I've been here, I don't think we've had a vouch or a vouch that has not taken a college course. When they get up to that point, they'll, they want to take them, most of them are trying to find ways to take them to fill an hour, rather than an elective course they don't want to sit through, they'd rather start for one of all tracks, so. Well, I would bet, well, I don't know of any in the last four years that have not taken any concurrent class, or upper level class, upper level, I should say, because they may not take it, but they've got to take an upper level course.
Then there's the flip side, then why would they ruin?
Right.
It's not affecting much, you gave me anything, you just strike it, you've got your weighted scale now in an appropriate manner that's not affecting it as much, it's just a primary goal.
Right, because then if anybody was a four or hires, and there are kids, I mean, there are kids that don't want to take this.
I mean, if you're truly trying to limit the number of students to receive it towards more prestigious, that tool's probably not going to work anyway, probably have to go to the ACT ranking or something.
And we're not, we're not limiting, I mean, we're not limiting to one.
Yeah, I get that. The only kid that I see potential issue with this is that kid that maybe goes to Tech Center for a trade, and is there two years, focuses on that, still is in another activity here, whether it's speech in the bay, or FA, or SCCA, and limits their ability to do those. I know you can still do them online and squeeze it in, but I don't think that kid's slacky either if he takes that path. But I'm fine either way, I just want everybody to understand what, you know, what about the end, what possible ramifications could be?
So if we did pay for everybody who knows, how much money would we be talking about? How many, depending on how many kids?
You're just paying one class, I mean, that was what I threw out there, I hadn't done the numbers.
What do you do this night? Ten or twelve kids in senior class taking concurrent?
Um, yes.
Probably a thousand dollars a year.
Thousand, fifteen hundred?
Yeah, fifteen hundred, M.I.
Well, I think they need to just first offer that other means of coming and leaving the vergigian American path to one class, at least if they take their college, that's pointing to.
Will Tech not count?
Well, major college course.
Well, some, it depends on the current tech class they take over.
Okay, so like a.
If they take, if they take bio med, then they're going to get trig recap, which is a weighted class. If they go over to junior and then they're in advanced math here, they're going to have to take a math class over there, I mean, because now all the eighth grade up has to have fours, they're going to still have to take, even if they take eighth grade math as algebra one, they're still going to have to take a math at junior year to fit into our schedule, so they're going to take an advanced math class over there. So if that AP advanced, or concurrent, not just concurrent, but AP class or that advanced math class beyond algebra two, higher level math, which they can get for Tech as well. So we were, I mean, it does say concurrent, but it also says an AP class, so if they took an AP math class at Tech, offered that, or if they take trig recap at Tech as a junior or senior, as a junior really, then that also counts. So they don't necessarily have to take concurrent, but they do have to take an upper level math or science, the math is the easiest one, trust me. or science, the math is easy, it's going to trust it all.
So the motion.
I think, go ahead and strike that, because I thought that was right.
All other, just the suspension part?
The suspension.
I would second that.
Michael?
Yes.
Poe?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
All right, we will jump back up to item number five, discussion votes accept or not accept bids for the G six, I think you'll have one more bid coming in from Anopla, for the social group. This bid is going to be for 8,500, so that is 1,300 more than our previous highest bid, so you guys can discuss and think about that, you know, those are kind of, you know, right here, but so we have one bid there for 8,500 for the scissor lift, so. What are your thoughts on that?
I don't think we're going to get a better offer than that, like I said, that was the only other one that came in after we opened it back up. We've already.
Opened two times a month each year.
Yeah, and then that is only the third bid that we did get, so I'm afraid we tried to hold on any longer, I mean, really not just decided to keep it, but I don't think we're going to get more than that.
If we kept it, would we ever use it?
We've kind of found an alternative already to a smaller one that can pretty much get the same thing done, and it's not costing us really anything right now. So.
The other ones were probably like five.
6,800 and 65, I believe, the other two bids.
Any further discussion? I'll make a motion, we accept the bid, 8,500.
Michael?
Yes.
Poe?
Yep.
Gibson?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Discussion of votes approve the 11th and 12th grade mathematics and science courses taken from the Curtech Center for the 2025-26 school year.
Something we do every year as part of their accreditation process, and we need to do also, you know, those math and science courses for our students.
Make a motion to approve the vouch out for your math and science courses.
I'll second that. Michael?
Yes.
Poe?
Yep.
Gibson?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Item number seven would be to approve adjunct teacher list below.
So Brookmeyer has been at Tech for quite a while, teaching anatomy and physiology over there, so we would, we, as part of their accreditation process, also have to vote to approve this with the board. And then for us here, we have Justin Schumacher in Woodshop, and we have been adjuncting that for Art, and same thing with Mrs. Tucker, I believe, computer, digital design type things there, and then Harley Hall, she just, we don't have her certifications done yet in those areas, she will be teaching, so the correct process there would be to adjunct her now, and then she will be certified in those areas as soon as the test is taken past, so we'll just need to vote to adjunct, approve those for, approve those for adjunct status.
Make a motion to approve the adjunctation study.
Second.
Michael?
Yes.
Poe?
Yep.
Gibson?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Item number nine would be going to the executive session to discuss the regular evaluation of the superintendent or the continuous evaluation process that we adopted earlier this year. I will make a motion to go into executive session.
Second.
Michael?
Yes.
Poe?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Do you want my motion?
I will second.
Michael?
Yes.
Poe?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
What, an executive sess, oh my gosh, an executive session, we discuss the ongoing evaluation of the superintendent in financial management and operations management. I have a consistent.
No action. All right, we'll move on to item number 10, the superintendent's report.
Just want to go over some of the summer projects that we've got. Most of them have been completed, some of them almost completed, as I discussed earlier, we've got our bake detectors installed in Junior High School, lots of painting that was done all over campuses and looks great. We've got new siding over at the elementary on the portable, that's been completed. Parking lot has the chican seal over it, we have some temporary poles out there right now to have everybody park beside, but we will paint that, and the elementary is crosswalks, I know have been painted, and we plan to have the parking spaces around this building painted, along with, like I said, the parking lot, and we'll put the curb, seeing that curb is back out there, the AC will come in and put six new light poles, I think we've got four out there before, so it'll be a little brighter. So hopefully, you know, it'll take a little bit of time still to get that kind of stuff done, but we're going to try to get it done with minimum interference with school starting up here in a few days. I want to make sure and thank the county and city for the help that they've provided getting that parking lot project completed. Weather delayed them a few days, but then they got back in here and got it done real quick, so appreciate that. We did have all of our teachers and staff back today, first day of in-service, and so we have, right at 53 total employees right now, everybody kind of wondered where we're at, and so it was good to have everybody back, and I heard lots of laughter, I know, in here, and their staff made, so that was, that's good, I'm sure the elementary got plenty over there too, I just didn't hear. Just want to mention real quick that we have not received our state aid allocation yet, we usually get those the second week of July, but we have yet to receive that, we're not the only school, I don't think any school in the state's received their state aid allocation notice, so getting ready to start school pretty quick, and it would be nice if we could get those to us, help with some budgeting issues, but we don't have any, hopefully by the end of this week. Other than that, we're just getting excited about the start of another school year.
Can you see the stuff and finish the pitch, right?
All right, there's no new business that I know of. Number 12, determine. Motion in a second.
Michael?
Yes.
Poe?
Yep.
Gibson?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Parker?